Be posting it on our social media and on YouTube too. So this is good information that will want to be seen by many, many others. So we'll go ahead and get started with us today. We have Dr. Nafisa Bonier, who is the Director of Public Health for the Blackout County Health Department. Jared Paramiter, sorry about that. He's the Environmental Health Manager. Thanks, Jared. And Josh Decora, who is the Disease Surveillance and Investigation Manager. So all three of them have some important information to share with us. So we'll go ahead and get started. Nafisa, if you wouldn't mind taking it over.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your presence. I know it's been a long journey, continues to be long, I mean, since the beginning in March. And unfortunately, right now, we're in a time period where we're seeing elevated numbers. Our deaths are increasing. And so it was important for us to connect with you all. And really, the reason for that today is to engage with the business community so that we continue to ask you all to have people mask, the social distancing, the limited capacity, but also take an opportunity, if there's any questions that you all might have for us or any need, to know that we are partner in this. I don't foresee our numbers decreasing anytime soon, but we're going to engage and really virtually hold hands, you know, throughout this time period. So I wanted the team to give you all an update on our numbers and also just go over some of the guidelines that you all have. Nothing has changed, but just to provide that update and also some, some questions or concern that you might have for us. So with that, Josh, if you can brief the group on just where we are in terms of COVID numbers and some of the issues or at least some of the things that we're seeing within the community so that the group is informed.
Yes, thank you, Nafisa. And thank, thank you to everybody for being here today. We've hit some unfortunate milestones this week from a number of circumstances. So I'll touch on each of those here. As for our numbers as of today, we just posted those on our BlackoutCOVID19.com website. We reached 6,054 positive cases, 725 serology cases, 4,530 recoveries, 102 deaths. And we just crossed the 15% positivity over the last 14 days. So in the same week, we have crossed not only 10% positivity, but the 15%, over 6,000 cases and over 100 deaths. So we've really hit some unfortunate milestone from that standpoint. We have also, on, on Wednesday, we made the announcement we were shifting into our high-risk level. And we did that after an alteration to the definitions we use for those as we are looking at our numbers increasing the previous week and still being quite a ways from hitting the, the high threshold from our previous system, from our previous metric. We felt that wasn't really accurately communicating the risk we were seeing. So we made the decision to revise that. And we really revised it to be in alignment with the, on the White House Coronavirus Task Force measures that they use for the, their red, yellow, and green rating for counties and states to be based off of the percent, the number of cases, the rate of cases per 100,000 reported in the last week, as well as the percent positivity being seen in the county. They use some various other metrics, but we felt those were the ones that we were, we'd be able to most accurately pull and report on. So those are the ones we used for our metrics. And so what the high status means is that we've seen greater than 100 cases per 100,000 population in the last week and that we are over the 10% positivity rate. So we are seeing a large amount of activity in the county right now. And we are actually today, March, the third day, we've seen over 100 reported cases in the last three days, which is a very troubling number for us. But our, our case investigation team and contact tracing team are working through those cases as quickly as they can and trying to make sure that we're getting in contact and being able to complete those, those contact tracing. And we are continuing to look at solutions to add capacity. And we have a number of items up in the air from that standpoint as we're working through to, to keep up with the increase in cases. Talk a little bit about some additional data trends that we've been seeing. The first with our age categories. So a little different from what we were seeing earlier in the fall, at the end of summer, where we are seeing the vast majority of cases in the, the young adult, the 19 to 24 population. That is still our highest age group at about 15% of cases over the, over the month of October. But not quite to the same level we were seeing at the end of the summer. But between the, the young adults and the, the working age populations, those are making up the, really the majority of the cases. With our next highest age grouping, that 25 to 29-year-old, and then really the rest of the, the working age, age groups from 30 to 65, all being at about the same level of 6% to 8% of our cases. So all right around that 7%. Not seeing as many cases in the elderly and older populations at this time. We are seeing a number of long-term care facility outbreaks, right? Numbers. And then we're seeing a little bit less than 10% of cases in our school-aged and child populations. We've been seeing some additional cases in those populations because of the additional surveillance and follow-up with the, the school-age children. But those numbers have been fairly steady since the, the start of the school year. So no large increases there. My question that we get a lot is where are cases being seen within the community? And where are cases being seen in different like industries by occupation? Really with the ZIP Code, we are seeing cases throughout the county. Obviously, we have the most cases in the, the larger population centers with Cedar Falls and Waterloo making up the majority of cases. But we've been seeing cases really throughout the entire county. And we do have the, the ZIP Code data available on our, our website as well. And then with industries, it's a little difficult to look at with our reporting tools, but we're seeing kind of spread out throughout industry as well. A slight, slight increases in the, the college student and K through 12 students. Part of that is the additional focus in identifying those individuals. But those are some of our larger groups as we're looking by industry. We also see manufacturing and healthcare as slightly higher than some of the other groups, some of the other occupation groups. Again, healthcare being fueled a little bit by the, the long-term care settings with the additional surveillance going on in those, those areas. And then really, from there, we see, we see cases in a variety of different occupations and really just across the community. And that's really the, the main takeaway we've been seeing over the past few, the past few weeks, as we've been looking at the numbers increase. This isn't like when we were in the, the spring where it was a singular outbreak or the Tyson outbreak and the long-term care outbreak really fueling our numbers. It is truly community widespread. We're seeing cases all over the, the county in all walks of life. And so it's not limited to one age, one age group or one exposure setting. It really is throughout the entire community. Beyond that, there is, I'm just one last thing I wanted to, to hit on before I'm turning it back over to, to Nafisa and Jared. And that is kind of the approach to, to fighting to COVID-19. And I know there's been a lot of attention on, on the use of face coverings lately, particularly with IDPH updating their close contact definition to really have that focus on face coverings. That if both the case and the close contact were wearing face coverings, then the close contact doesn't need to, doesn't need to quarantine. They just need to monitor for symptoms over the next, the next two weeks. And really, I can't understand the importance of the face coverings for helping prevent the spread of COVID-19. But that, we can't solely rely on face coverings. We need to have that full multi-level approach to containing the spread of, of the virus. So not just face coverings, but that six-foot social distance, preventing that exposure from even occurring. When you're having those close, close, that close contact with people, keeping the duration short to that less than 15 minutes, particularly less than 15 consecutive minutes. But if you can prevent even the 15 cumulative minutes across the day, that is even better. Having those steps that focus on cleaning and hygiene and cleanliness with washing your hands, cleaning high-touch surfaces, those types of procedures, as well as just continuing to emphasize that when people are sick to, to stay home, to be evaluated by their healthcare provider to rule out COVID-19 before they go back to their normal activities. All right, I think that was everything that I wanted to, to hit on. So I guess I'd either be available to, to take some questions or for saving questions to the end. I will turn it back over to Nafisa.
Thank you, Josh. Save some questions till the end, but I have to emphasize what Josh is saying. So there's a face covering, but the social distancing is important. And, and also the, the washing of the hands frequently for 20 seconds. And one of the things that's important to remember is that I know that, you know, with the younger populations, there's, you know, data that's showing it's not impacting them as, as much. But we have an elderly community, you know, and, and we have to do everything to the best of our ability to protect the elderly population. I mean, it's, it's, you know, when you look at the, not only Blackout County, but the state of Iowa, we have a high percentage of elderly population. And that is something that we have to, to do. And also it's flu season. If you all can promote also ensuring that people get their flu vaccine, employees get their flu vaccines, that is going to be something very important as well. But I just want to remind the group that we do have an elderly population. And, you know, from just what I'm hearing with the, the hospitals or inpatient, hospitalization has, has increased. And we do have a meeting with them on November 2nd to touch base again. But, you know, I just, my heart goes out because I know that our elderly community members have been in isolation for some time. But this is not the time for us to be more relaxed with our preventative measures. This is actually the time, as, as you all have heard Josh talk about community spread, you know, some of the, the feedback that we get with Facebook is that people want to know specifically, what does that mean? And it, it means what it just means. There's just community spread. There's not a one specific sector or area. It's just COVID is here, it hasn't left. I think during the summer, we were able to spend some more time outside and, and social distance a bit. But now with the winter season, we, we're going to be in close proximity. And, and so it's important that not only, only wear your face mask, but also watch your distance. And also if employees are sick, please continue to be flexible with their schedules and, and allowing them to take their, their sick time and just do what's best for their, for their families. But we are getting into just more and more of that close proximity because of the winter. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jared. And Jared, if you can just talk about the, the business guidance and, and, you know, us being a partner with the business community so that we can help with anything.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nafisa. And thanks for everyone who, who chose to participate today. It shows, shows us a lot, especially recently with, you know, we've been getting more and more reports every day of, of, you know, businesses of, you know, ranging from, you know, manufacturer, manufacturers to restaurants to, you know, sales, you know, you know, essentially bad actors in the community, people who are not, you know, requiring, they're not, they're not following some of these basic guidelines and some of these basic assumptions about COVID-19. You know, to begin with, I kind of start on the things that we actually, we regulate, things we impact. So, you know, the restaurants, the bar industry here, you know, the restaurants and bars have taken a pretty solid hit over the last seven months, eight months since this all began. You know, they have operated at various times at different restrictions. And, you know, even especially with bars here, this most recent, most recent, you know, event here at kind of the end of, the end of August, we saw a lot of bar closures and a lot of issues with that. So I want to, I want to just, you know, point out that there are definitely elements of the community that are, you know, kind of dealing with these regulations or these guidelines as regulations rather than just, just recommendations. You know, we still are following the most recent governor's proclamation for, for restaurants and bars, which really entails pretty much what we're recommending here. You know, making sure that people who, you know, who are utilizing the establishment are not sitting down and enjoying a meal or a drink, that they're wearing masks, that we, we maintain that social distance of at least six feet, you know, in between groups and individuals, that, you know, people are not congregating within those establishments. So, you know, we, we get, you know, roughly 12 to 15 various complaints every week. Some days it's much worse and we see upwards of, you know, seven or eight complaints a day. And it is not just, it is not just from bars and restaurants. It is from the entire communities. We wanted to take an opportunity to, to push these concepts back out, you know, to, to individuals who can turn around and make some actual change or some real change in our communities. You know, nothing we're going to tell you here today about guidelines and recommendations are any, is anything different than we've been telling the community the entire time other than that there's a real entreaty here for people to, to not forget that, hey, this, these recommendations, these guidelines are in place for a reason. I think we kind of got a little spoiled this summer. We saw our rates drop. You know, people were able to get out and kind of be some of the things they liked and loved. You know, we, we pulled some of those restrictions or relaxed some of the restrictions we had on some of our businesses and people, you know, kind of got a semblance of normalcy for a little while. And now we're kind of seeing some of the results of that, I think. You know, Josh kind of pointed to some of the things here that our rates over the last two weeks have done really nothing but increase and increase at a pretty astronomical rate. And it is not one singular event. This is across the board. So we, you know, we, we made the, you know, the call to get, get out in front of this as best we could here, elevate our, our levels to red. You know, so what are some of those strategies we've been pushing out? Well, of course, social distancing at work is, is, is an absolute request. That's an absolute must. Wearing masks, not just one person wearing a mask. You know, we know that two people wearing masks, you know, communicating that, that, that ups our chances of, of reducing the spread. In keeping with that as well, you know, we're looking at optional strategies that some businesses can take. If they can, you know, allowing employees to work from home or work remotely if possible, that, that seems to be a great strategy that, that definitely seems to be working in the community. You know, we have other locations where they can't do that. You know, your sales staff, okay? Well, if, you know, you're, you're social distancing, you're offering up, you know, hand sanitizer in your, in your business, you know, you're limiting any kind of time that's congregating. Everyone's wearing masks. Every, every little step, every little added safeguard can, can help us, can help slow the spread incrementally here. So that is definitely some of, those are some of the recommendations that we keep, keep harping on here. And I know we probably sound a bit like a broken record, but there's a reason for it. You know, every, every indicator right now shows us that these safeguards work. The other thing that, that I wanted to hit on too, and this is something we have been seeing anecdotally, you know, over the last two to three weeks, as we're starting with, with people relaxing, it seems that there's, there's essentially, you know, kind of, kind of a, an understanding that this might not be as bad as, 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 you know, the media has portrayed it or, you know, public health has portrayed it. And, and then, and that might be the case for some individuals, but it certainly is not the case for the population as a whole. You know, so really, we, we've gotten reports of, you know, people working sick, of businesses not allowing their employees to go home, not, you know, really, not, really not working with their employees in any way, shape, or form, and essentially just trying to march on business as usual. And we want to caution against that, absolutely. If your employees are experiencing any kind of symptoms related to COVID-19, you know, it behooves you to, to, to ensure that that employee, you know, goes in and gets tested and is not working while sick. So those are, those are some of the, the safeguards that we're really pushing out there too. I know we, we pushed out an email, or Cedar Valley pushed out an email yesterday in regards to trick-or-treating guidance. You know, it, it makes sense to kind of discuss that here too. With the holiday weekend coming up, you know, the guidelines we pushed out in that, whereas, you know, it, it's kind of sad that we can't celebrate or we, you know, we shouldn't be celebrating as normal this year. I have small children and, you know, not being able to take them trick-or-treating is definitely sad, right? But it is something we need to, we need to make sure we consider and we take very seriously. So please, you know, if you want to hand that guidance out to your employees, we would absolutely appreciate that. Get as broad of a dispersal that information as possible. So, you know, I think that'll cover my portion for today. I'll hand it back to Nafisa and then I think we can take some questions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both, Jared and Josh. And both conveyed, you know, the Halloween trick-or-treating. I have a, I have a ninja and a butterfly today, so, in school. So I know, and my heart goes out to, to all the kids. I, I understand how important trick-or-treating is. But, you know, the health of the community is, is very important. And these are temporary things that we, we need to do to get to at least some, ensuring that the community members are, are protected, especially those that are vulnerable until we get a vaccine. And so just think of it as, I know this has been like, it seems like a marathon, but with, there will be an end to COVID at some point. And so I just, I just want you all to stay encouraged. And, and, and really my ask of you all here today is really to help us too. We cannot do this alone. We're getting, we're making sure to do our best to go through the disease investigation and contact tracing, but it's going to take all of us. And so again, thank you all for being here. And now we are open to questions.
So the chat box is open if anyone wants to. We do have an observation here about recommendations of families not getting tested if they have a child that does test positive. I don't know if you want to comment to that. It says, if a parent, oh, excuse me, if a parent tests positive, doctors are recommending families not get tested, just quarantine. Was, would that be a similar recommendation from the Health Department?
So this is a question we've, we've gotten numerous times and we've worked with both our, our school and healthcare partners on this guidance. And it's where we have two pieces of guidance that conflict with one another and where our typical recommendation would be that, yes, if someone is positive in the home, the rest of their household, that they started feeling some, some, doesn't necessarily need to be tested because we would presume that they would be positive. However, when we start looking at those high-risk settings such as school and childcare, that recommendation changes because without that positive test result, we can't do contact tracing in the, in that high-risk setting. So we have given that recommendation to our healthcare providers to distribute to, or to our healthcare partners to distribute throughout their providers and systems. We will continue to, to give and update that recommendation. Unfortunately, when it comes down to it, it is the provider's decision whether or not to test. There, all there are other options, I say, if the, the primary care provider refuses or won't order the test, if the, the family wants to go through Test Iowa or another provider, that's an option for people. We know people have a primary care provider and chose that provider for a reason. So that's not necessarily always an option for people. But it would be in areas the parents would really like to, to proceed with testing. But we know that's a challenge. We try to prevent those situations from coming up as best we can and will continue to communicate that recommendation to the healthcare providers.
So Josh, you, both you, actually, all three of you have mentioned contact tracing. Can you explain a little bit about the process of contact tracing and how that works? Whoever is doing that.
So yes, one, without going over the whole surveillance process, whenever public health is notified, any, any time someone tests positive for COVID-19, and when we receive that, that notification, we work to try to get ahold of that person, review information with them about their symptoms, go over that close contact definition of within six feet for 15 or more consecutive minutes while they were infectious, determine anybody who they were in contact with that might need that definition. That's when we then look at mask use, where both the case and the contact wearing that, that face covering. If they were, we then work to notify that person to tell them to monitor for symptoms over the next 14 days. If either the case or the contact weren't wearing a face covering, that's when we notify the person to be in quarantine for the next 14 days after exposure. And so we, we work to get through those as quickly as possible that, so that we can identify those close contacts and hopefully get anyone who needs to be in quarantine, into quarantine before they themselves start becoming symptomatic and potentially infectious. Obviously, there are challenges to that when we're seeing the, the amount of cases that we're seeing right now. But like I said, where our staff is working tirelessly to get through those, those investigations as quickly as we can. And we're continually looking at ways to add and build capacity to make sure that we're getting to everybody in a timely manner.
Very good. Thank you. So we do have time for additional questions if there are any out there. And if, I guess if anybody wants to turn the microphone on, you're welcome to, to give a shout out with your question. Otherwise, wait a few moments here. I do want to thank this team, Dr. Bonier and Jared and Josh for all of their, not only their time today, but all of the round-the-clock work that you're doing. Because we know this has to be, enduring this process and knowing that we're not quite to the finish line and won't be for a while has to be pretty exhausting, I'm sure, for everyone. So thank you for, for all that you're doing. I do want to reiterate so how important it is, and you all brought it up too, about getting a flu shot. And, and while I know, and we all know that you didn't really share any new information, the fact that the numbers are elevated is new. So reiterating the preventative measures and practicing them more strategically is really important for all of us to remember. Our goal is to keep businesses open. We want, we don't want to have that call to close businesses. So our goal is to have this information out to make sure the business community and organizations and the leadership in our, in our community, we do everything we possibly can to make sure that we can keep, keep things moving as, as normally as possible. And, and yet we know that that's not likely for a while either. So if there aren't any more questions, it's Friday. I know people have a lot of work to do before the weekend. So again, thank you to the Blackout County Health Department and all of you and, and all of you participating. So please share this information. We, like I said, this is being recorded and we will have it posted. So please share this with your employees or your coworkers as well. And thank you, thank you, Dr.
I did, just sorry to interrupt, Carrie. I see a question come in about travel.
Very good.
So I just wanted to address that very quickly. Sorry to interrupt. So with, with travel recommendations, we have gotten some, it's been some time since CUC updated, but I believe it's been updated since our last call. So I'll go over that quickly. So with travel, really, there isn't a strict recommendation for people to quarantine for the 14 days after returning from travel. And that's really regardless of the area they're traveling to. But there are some, there are some caveats to that. So rather than basing the, the travel recommendations purely off of where people are traveling to, CUC has updated their travel guidance to be based off of high-risk activities during travel. high-risk activities during travel, um, during which they do include travel to, um, other countries with a, a, a level three or, uh, travel advisory, um, as a, a high-risk activity rather than including other locations. Um, but really it's besides that travel outside of the country. It's looking at what are you doing while you're traveling? Are you attending a, uh, a large gathering where there is going to be a lot of people? Are you going on a, a cruise and engaging in kind of that type of close contact, that type of high-risk setting? And so if you're traveling to, uh, outside of the country or while you're traveling, you're going to a wedding, a, a concert, a sporting event, one of those really large gatherings, the recommendation is to stay home as much as possible for the fourteen days after travel. Though it's not necessarily that strong quarantine recommendation, the way we, we have been interpreting that and sharing that out is, um, that it's recommended that they, the person stay home, but they wouldn't be under, say, a quarantine order to do so. So we'd recommend that they stay home and, and I self-isolate for those fourteen days, but it isn't the same type of quarantine recommendation that we give to someone who's been in, in with it, uh, in close contact to someone who's tested positive.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Um, I don't see any additional questions, so I think we'll, um, we'll close our conversation today. But thank you all, both those, uh, Black Hawk County Health Department team members for presenting and all of you for participating. And, um, as Dr. Underboni says, please call the health department with any questions at all, at any time. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Take care.